Hey everybody, welcome to today's cathedra webinar. You are tuning into day three of the five day roles and responsibilities of the Board of Commissioners series, presented by your instructor Cheryl A. Cosley, who is Principal of Cheryl A. Cosley and Associates Housing Consulting and Management Services. My name is Brooke Warrington. I'm the Training and Development Specialist here at the Native Learning Center. We're also thrilled that you could tune in for the webinar today. If you could follow along while I read the disclaimer aloud, please. This webinar provides a summary of fundamental concepts, requirements, and or procedures within the allotted 90 minutes. The material discussed does not illustrate all possible scenarios that could be applicable. We also have our copyright infringement law printed here. So this is just a friendly reminder that the webinar materials are protected by copyright, trademark, trade secret, and other intellectual property laws. If you need to access any of the recordings, or there is a vast list of reference items that Cheryl has put together for you. All of those are available in the courses section here on the learning platform. And I'm actually going to put a link to a PDF of the slides in the chat for you right now. I'm so sorry. I should have had that in there earlier. That is my bad. There we go. PDF of the slides is now in the chat for you. And if you tune in for day four and five, we hope we'll see you there. You'll just log in like you did today and you'll click on that green banner at the top of the screen. We ask that you try to join with listen only capabilities. Just helps to cut down on audio feedback. And then if you find the sound is coming out of the wrong device, maybe you're trying to use your headphones. Maybe you have like a Bluetooth speaker that you're trying to use. You can just go down to that little telephone icon at the bottom of your screen. And that'll pull up a list, excuse me, of your speaker and mic devices. So you can switch to what you would like to use. We do, of course, encourage class participation. And there are several ways to interact during the webinar. We'll primarily rely on this public chat feature. So if you don't yet have it open, it's available in the messages panel where you see me circling. You can just click on that and then you'll be able to see the chat between you and everyone else who's in the webinar. If you want to say a comment, ask a question. If you have any tech support issues that you need me to help navigate through. You'll just come down to this box that says send message to public chat. Click there, type what you want to say, and then you can hit enter, or you can click on the little paper airplane button and that'll send it in. With Cheryl's presentations, a lot of times your answer or your questions, excuse me, are going to be answered as she goes through the material. So we'll save questions for the end. But if you do want to send it into the chat, just to make sure you don't forget it when it comes up, that is great too. And then there is a list of important links in the shared notes section, like the webinar feedback survey, again, the PDF of the slides. How to friend us on LinkedIn, just things like that. We'd love if you try out the public chat together, though. Take a moment to introduce yourself. You could let us know your name, where you're tuning in from, your work or your role in Indian country that probably led you to the webinar today. And then your tribal affiliation, if you have one, you might just be a tribal employee and not have affiliation. That's okay too. And then just a quick final note while y'all are introducing yourselves in the chat. Try not to click on the red menu panel that's to the very far left of your screen. Yours might just be the little icons as opposed to the full list with the text. But just know that if you click on something in there, it is going to immediately pull you from the webinar and it's going to take you to whatever you clicked on. But you can easily rejoin by just clicking on that green banner once again. Alright folks, while you're introducing yourselves in the chat, it is with great pleasure that I introduce your webinar instructor Cheryl A. Cosley. And Cheryl, I have made you presenter now.
Thank you very, very much. Welcome to day three, guys. Thanks for coming back. As always, I hope you learn lots. Welcome in. Good afternoon. This is brought to you through the Native Learning Center and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. More specifically, the Office of Native American Programs. My name is Cheryl Cosley. I am on the Jibway, Chippewa. I'm from that tribe. We're located in Bay Mills, Michigan. It's the top of Michigan. Our waters actually border Canada. My Anishinaabe name is Red Bird Woman and I'm Loon Clan. You say Bay Mills, Kino Shinkoning, which means place of the Pike. And I served as Director of Housing for my tribe for over 28 years. During that time, I also served with the Great Lakes Indian Housing Association. That's a 31 tribes surrounding the Great Lakes area. As their chairperson for seven years, and I was on the National American Indian Housing Council Board of Directors. I started as the secretary, went to the vice chair, did that for about 16 years. And then served two, two-year terms as Chairwoman. So I've been in housing since 1990. And I started Cheryl A. Cosley and Associates in March of 2019. And I provide training and technical assistance through the Lower 48 and Alaska. I travel quite extensively to different places. And I also teach virtually like this. So I'm very blessed. I've been able to help our people throughout the majority of my career. So I hope you learned lots today. My information is at the beginning and the end of the slides. Please reach out if you ever have any questions and I'll always try to get back and answer you. So the objectives are to understand the background and history of Nahazda. And to make sure that you know and can properly adhere to all of the rules put in place when you accept those funds through HUD. And you know, hopefully steer your organization down the right path and understand your, you know, your leadership role as a Board of Commissioner. You're going to learn, hopefully, some of the many, many requirements that the housing programs need to make sure that they adhere to to run a successful Indian housing program. There are, as Brooke said, a lot of reference materials here for you. I would grab them if you can, you know, download them, stick them on a thumb drive, stick them in a file on your desk. One, two, and three are where you're going to go to learn all of your rules, basically. You start out with the Nahazda statute, then you go to the regulations and then to the uniform administrative requirements for like the finance components. There's a lot of other interesting reference materials that throughout the course of the whole five days that I continued to reference. You know, total development cost, Indian and tribal preferences, the policy status table from yesterday. The guidances for assisting non-low income families. Calculating annual income, which you have to basically make sure that your A and O policy contains the brand new income limits for this year. Conflict of interest in housing, tribal wage rates, you can put those in place. Useful life and binding commitments. If you're expending Nahazda funds and giving, you know, down payment assistance, or if you're doing rehab or things like that, you have to adhere to the rules for useful life and binding commitment. There's self-monitoring plans in here. You're supposed to actually make sure that self-monitoring occurs at least once a year in conjunction with your annual performance report. Environmental reviews before you spend any money, you know, and utilizing federal supply sources. That's a brand new document that was just updated. So there's a lot of good material here for you. So as she said, day three, we're going to talk more about the annual performance report and that self-monitoring. Then we're going to get into the formula, how you get your money. And we're going to talk about the board's roles, responsibilities, you know, what your roles are versus the executive director. And some of those board operations, you know, the business of your housing board. So I hope you learn lots today and we'll get going. So this, as I said, we're going to hit the annual performance report and the self-monitoring requirements. So this was under the IHP portion or module. When you go and you look at your IHP or your APR, you need to realize programs and projects are actually two different things. Programs are an ongoing activity. They're in every IHP that you prepare. It's your maintenance. It's your administration of your programs. Projects have specific start and end dates. They're dependent upon how much money you're going to spend that year, how much money you received. Are we going to do any development? Are we going to do any type of rental assistance? Those are considered projects and they usually, you know, change from year to year. So some of those key sections like in the IHP is your cover page, your housing needs section, the descriptions of your programs that you're going to put forth. 1937 Housing Act, and I really didn't explain that very well. But 1937 Housing Act is pre-Nahazda. So it's everything before 1996. It's your mutual homes if you had them. There were some Section 8 certificates and there was rentals that we built and we competed for those monies. But when we did that, especially like the rentals right now, there's an ongoing subsidy attached to those. And those are called your, your CAS, your current assisted stock. HUD is very, very particular, strict, because they're giving you an ongoing stipend and it's the only thing that you'll get that stipend for. Taking care of that current assisted stock. They want to make sure that you are, that it's being rented and that you're caring for that. And you're doing the proper maintenance and inspections on those. As a matter of fact, that's one of the only times that they will require you to amend your IHP. You have to amend your IHP if you say you're going to spend a certain amount and then you lower that amount, taking care of your current assisted stock. They, they require you actually to amend your IHP. So they're very, very stringent about that. So if you have those and you're getting those subsidies, take care of them. Make sure that you're doing that. So maintaining those 1937 Act units, they're going to ask about that in Section 4. Your budget is in 5, your other submission items are in 6, then you have certifications that are in 7 through 9. The first section is your cover page, you know, it's got the, the key contents of your grant, your grant numbers, your recipient program year, your federal fiscal year, your contact information, your tax ID, your DUNS number, your SAM expiration date, and, and your formula grant amount. So there's a lot of information in there. Make sure that you've got that in case something happens with whoever prepares your IHP, if it's your executive director that normally does that. You as a Board of Commissioner should know when your IHP and your APR is due, and you should have all of that information on hand. If you're ever put in that position, you know, by accident or, or by them just leaving. You have to have that information so you can get this done and have somebody submit that on your behalf. Because you never want to put your fiscal, you know, that, that funding at risk for the year. So Section 2 is the housing need that describes the types of needs for your recipients. How many low income families do you have? What are the needs? What's the description of how the activities you're proposing are going to meet those needs? And that geographic distribution of funds. That really applies if you've got what they call an expanded formula area. If you said, okay, we are, we're going to take care of the people here close on our reservation that we're sitting on, but I've got people all the way to Detroit. I'd like to take care of, you know, our tribal members, you know, further downstate. Well, if you were successful and you expanded your formula area and you got more money to take care of them, you have to prove that you're doing that. Program descriptions and outputs. Is it an eligible activity? How many people are you going to serve? What's that intended outcome? Who's going to be the beneficiary? How much assistance are you going to give them? And the planned outputs. And then your homeowner and your rental activities, you don't combine those either. Those are separate activities. You don't combine homeownership, rental construction, acquisition, or rehab. For example, if you're constructing five homeownership units, five rental housing units, they would be two different activities. Because they're two different sets of recipients also. So your program eligible activities, your outcomes, your outputs, what recipient specific programs are going to be funded? Is it an eligible activity? So you pick a list, and that's a drop down list on there of the possible eligible activities. It's an internal control. What is your intended result? And you pick from, again, a different list. And then how many units or households are you planning to assist? So this is one of the first ones that I did and I was trying to get away with, you know, not kicking in the useful life requirements at the time. So it was a down payment and closing cost. And what was the possible outcome? Well, we're going to assist our tribal renters become homeowners. Who are we going to assist? Well, we're going to assist our low income families. What is the type and the level? Well, it's going to be a $5,000 cap, you know, and it's going to be a grant. And we're going to try the planned output the first year. We're going to hopefully get four people successfully ready for a mortgage, you know. I think they're still offering that program. More money involved now, but we're, you know, very successful in mortgage products on this reservation now after, you know, several years. So it's, it's a good thing. So this is just a guidance document for, you know, your director or you if you're looking at them. Your allowability, your outcomes, your outputs, they're measured differently depending on what they are. Some, you know, are measured by household, some by unit, some by dollars. So that'll hopefully help you when you're looking at or preparing that. So the Section 4 is your 1937 Housing Act. And it's maintaining those and it's speaking about demolition disposition. Now I did this with a 10-unit project. I had to prove that it was more beneficial to the budget and the tribal members for me to demolish the 10 units in that rental project and rebuild on that footprint than it was to rehab the house. It was quicker, it was more cost efficient, and I had to go through several hoops, you know, involve IHS, BIA, different people. Architects were, were, you know, they could see that it was cheaper, but I was able to do that. And I was able to keep that subsidy, which was the most important part ongoing for those CAS units. So you need to describe how you're going to maintain and operate those, those units. Remember I told you how picky they are about that? And described any planned demolition or disposition that you have for those. So your sixth or your fifth section is your sources of funds. So, you know, funds that you have at the beginning of the year, funds that you're expecting to receive, anticipated expenditures from every funding source, anticipated unexpended funds, and include anticipated receipt and use of program income. This is one of the areas where your finance person is key. You know, they have all of these numbers where they should. That's why I was saying it's really important that they get trained. If they're tribal, I guess, finance person rather than somebody that's, you know, been their whole life working with the housing entity. So uses of funds. Describe your recipients programs and which funds are going to be used during the upcoming year. Prior and current year, funds anticipated to be expended on every program, prior and current year, other funds anticipated. So you have to list, you know, the funds that are coming into your agency from all those different areas if you're successful at getting them. And then the other submission items. Talked about that useful life. Your model activities or anything you're proposing a model activity, or are you going to assist those that are between 80 and 100% of median income? So assistance to over-income participants. Do you have tribal preferences? The administration, and then that expanded formula area that I had just talked about a little while ago, what that is. And then that last section is your certifications. That you're compliant, that you've got all the rules and policies that your state, when you're, you know, accepting that money. You're saying that you've got all these policies in place. You gotta make sure that you have them. And then there's tribal certifications and tribal wage rates, okay? There's a lot of confusion, especially with, you know, I go out and I, I help a new ED or something and they confuse the area about tribal wage rates. And we're going to talk about that later on in the week, but a tribal wage rate is not the wage grid that the tribal administrator uses to give raises across the board to all the staff of the tribe. A tribal wage rate is used in lieu of Davis Bacon when you're building. And it's for your tradespeople, not, not your, you know, not your people that do nothing but paperwork. I'm talking about your drywallers, your painters, your electricians, your truck drivers, your flaggers, your, you know, your tradespeople that build for you. So that tribal wage rate, you have the ability to set in lieu of Davis Bacon. So that's what they're asking about here. Make sure that you don't confuse them and say, yes, we have one, because very few of our tribes actually have tribal wage rates when it comes to that. But we can and we do. Bay Mills has them. But you know, you have to make sure that you undertake, it's, it's not a one and done. There's self-certifications that you have to do and files that you have to have in place, you know. And then you have to make sure that you're doing your self-monitoring. You're saying that you're doing self-monitoring on a yearly basis. We'll get into that a little bit more at the end of this. So timeframes. Your original IHP, when you submit it, they have 60 days from that original submission. Now, if you amend your IHP, they have a 30-day timeframe for the amendments. So what are they going to look at? What are their critical IHP review points? Is it complete? Are all your requirements, you know, all those required elements included? Eligibility, are all activities eligible? Are the affordable housing activities under the statute? If not, it's considered a model activity and you have to go through a couple of different hoops. Consistency, are all the key sections of the IHP internally consistent in a meaningful way? I don't know who typed that. I don't agree with that part, but well, I don't, I shouldn't say I don't agree with it. I just wish they would have used different wording. So your IHP revisions, they're only required, as I said, if you're going to add a new activity, which you can do at any time. You know, you could always amend your IHP. And then if you're going to reduce that amount budgeted for the operation and maintenance of your formula, formula current assisted stock, those units that you built before 1996. That have those subsidies attached to them. They're very, like I said, they are more picky about that than anything else you do. Okay? So the guidance, you know, your, your federal fiscal year is always October 1st to September 30th. Always in advance of your calendar year. So federal fiscal year 2025 starts on October 1st of 2024, or started and ends in September 30th of this year of 2025. Your program years are basically on the quarter and you have the ability to change that. We did it. Just for reporting purposes, you know, but, but you can change that if you need to. But it could be October 1st, it could be January 1st, it could be April 1st, or it could be July 1st. So that's, you know, depending on what you have there. And so these are our due dates. As you can see, the IHP due date, if it's July 18th of, you know, this year, the waiver deadline would be October 16th. That is the most they can give you to get that thing in and completed and, you know, out to date. So those are all your deadlines. Make sure that as a Board of Commissioner, you know when your IHPs and your APRs are due. You should know, you know, some basic information that you can ask your ED to prepare for you. That's one thing I've been, I've been trying to work with a lot of the tribes and that's onboarding their Board of Commissioners. Making sure that they give them the tools to hit the ground running so they have an idea. These are the programs we offer. These are our policies. These are the, how to read an IHP and an APR. This is when they're due. These are, you know, the bylaws of the Board of Commissioners. A lot of times the tribal council just puts them in there. They say, hey, you're on there now for, you got a three-year term. And it expires then, and, and you don't get any materials to help onboard you, as I call that. So in some years, Congress does not appropriate funds on time. I've seen it a lot since 1990, or not a lot, but you know, several times. And even though, you know, your federal fiscal year starts on October 1st, sometimes that appropriation comes in January. And I've actually seen it later than that. Normally, you know, if you're collecting good rent rolls and, and you've got a good firm program in place, you've got enough money. But if you're small and you don't collect or get a lot of rents to begin with, or a lot of, you know, you could run out. And you have the ability to get more money if you need it, as long as, you know, there's no money in locks that you can access. And it's, it's not uncommon to have, you know, not knowing your actual grant amount either. Until that, you know, Congress passes that. So to address that, they run a draft of our IHBG in June. And it'll give you an anticipated level of funding. And then they publish the information on CodeTalk for you using the Formula Response Form when they get that final date. If your appropriation is unknown when your IHP is due, you can use the estimate that, you know, they put forward, or you can actually use your previous year's amount. And then you adjust your IHP internally and make sure your APR that you submit is correct. Okay? Once that final appropriation is available, your area own app will automatically process your grant agreement and send it to you as a recipient. So if you add a new activity, you, you know, reduce the support for your 1937 Housing Act. You have to submit that IHP amendment using the form provided in Section 16. Prior to your program year end, if you don't add a new activity or reduce your support, then any other changes can be reflected within your APR in that submission. Okay? So a needs description, you need to describe the housing needs for your tribal members. If you're brand new, look at some of your old stuff. When your formula figures come out, half, if you have a grant writer, they're a great person to show that information to and ask them, does this seem correct? You know, they have an idea because they're writing grants. How big your tribal enrollment is? How many people that you have are low income? How many people that you have are very low income? You know, all, all of that information they have, you know, so you need to describe your housing needs for your tribal members. It's a really good idea if possible, but it's a big undertaking to do a housing needs assessment of your tribal members occasionally. If you're a per cap tribe, something like that, sometimes you can say, well, we need you to fill this out before we get you the per cap. That way you'll actually get a response of the majority of your people. A lot of times they, they don't fill them out. Or you can, you know, our, our tribe will actually give, you know, Visa gift cards or reduce gas or free gas at our tribal gas station, something like that, you know, give 50% off a meal off of a tribally owned venue, something like that to encourage your response. At first, we had a tribal chairman here that, that really focused on homeownership. So I built homeownership, I mean, like 200 units of homeownership. And then it became, okay, now we need to take care of, it was funny. It's like, we still have 30 and 35-year-old men living with us, our, our sons, you know, if they're not married, they don't have any place to go because there was nothing except homeownership out there and they didn't have a family to qualify for a home at. So we built a an eight-bedroom, an eight-unit, one-bedroom apartment building and a 20-unit, two-bedroom. And that thing has been full to capacity every, ever since. We turned around and built another 20 and that's full all the time. That, that was the need. We had college housing, you know, attached to our college. So the elders, we had an elder complex at one time. It was actually there before I got there and they didn't like it. They wanted their own individual smaller houses and they have a lot of stuff. So I built them smaller houses and then had to give them sheds because they had a lot of stuff, you know? But that's basically what we had to find out is what our tribal members wanted and needed. And then we built some one and two-bedroom houses for rent, more for the brand new families that were starting. But we were able to also look at some of the figures and we had a huge amount of our tribal population that were under the age of 25 at the time. That told us we were going to need, you know, more housing. So, you know, those are things you can look at. What type? What family type composition? Do you want elderly? Do you want veteran? Do you want disabled? Do you want college students? Do you want rentals? If they're first time, you could actually include the utilities in the rent because they're not used to making those extra payments also. Look at your housing stock. Do you have major and minor housing? Do they want a rehab program out there? You're going to need data, you know, average annual income, average household size. Do you have very many overcrowded homes? Do you have needs for single-person dwellings? Do your homes in your area have adequate plumbing, electrics, like electricity, you know, your You know, your other utilities. Um, those will help you form your long and short-term plans and decide how you're gonna, you know, prioritize, um, your tribal need for your people and, and what they want. So it's a good idea to try to do that, you know, but it's an undertaking. So some of the program activity descriptions used within an I H P, the modernization of nineteen thirty-seven act units, uh, construction of new housing, rehabilitation and rental housing, down payment assistance, other homebuyer assistance, tenant-based rental assistance, crime prevention and safety, um, reserve accounts, planning and administration, operation of thirty-seven Housing Act, uh, acquisition of existing housing. We would often have, um, because we built so much homeownership housing, we would have these three and four-bedroom homes and all of the children would leave the household when they, you know, became of age and, and the parents were like, I got a three, four-bedroom house and, you know, there's just my husband and I. We'd buy him back. The, the Housing Authority would buy him back. We could buy those back cheaper than we could rebuild and offer it to a different family. And then we would help the, you know, people that we purchased the home for, find and secure a smaller one. Um, so you can do things like that, acquisition of land for housing, closing cost assistance, rehab assistance to, you know, your existing homes, uh, housing management, model activities, okay? Um, infrastructure to support housing, operation and maintenance of your Nahazda assisted units. And then you have all those possible, you know, model activities, you know, uh, new office building, new buildings for your guys' supplies, uh, laundromat. I've seen daycare centers built. Uh, depending, you know, you can do a combination of crime prevention and a model activity. I was able to purchase a drug dog and the hot dog package for the police vehicle and the training for the dog. Um, but there's, you know, firm commitments that come into play when you do things like that also. That dog stays with that officer for the rest of their life. Um. Not allowed to fund an officer, but you can fund the training of the officer, you know, so there's certain things that you can do. Um. If you get a chance to go to your regional housing association meetings, at least where I come from, um, Eastern Woodlands, our administrator was always there and that's the point where we would say, hey, you know, our council would like us to look at this. What do you think? Which is the, you know, is that doable? What would you suggest? And we would bounce ideas off of them to make sure that, you know, perhaps that was allowable activity, or maybe you gotta steer it down this road to make it fit this way, you know, so, um, that's a good opportunity for your executive director, or if, you know, you travel with them as Board of Commissioners or staff, to have those one-on-ones with the, the administrators of your own app offices. So some of those other submission items is that I H, um, e- excuse me, is that useful life? Um, it has to be listed in your I H P, so this is a good time to find out what you're listing. Um, I've seen a couple of different ones in the last six months that were higher than this. Um, one from a very wealthy, wealthy community. Um. Are they're in the middle of a wealthy, you know, area? And one of my villages up in Alaska, but you barge everything in, you know, so theirs was a little bit higher than this. Um. I, I, I still don't have a feel yet what your area own app office will accept. But this is the one that was most commonly done throughout Indian country and we're gonna talk more about that during the week. But this is when you give down payment assistance or you give rehab. Um. If you're giving assistance and the resources under five thousand, six months, you know, five thousand to fifteen thousand, it's a five-year commitment and there's a commitment that runs with the land. So depending on where you're at, you file it with the B I A or, you know, you know, your county courthouse. Um, and they sign a binding agreement with you, um, and you track it. And if they sell it to somebody who's not low-income or, or Native American, well, then you have to get that money back, you know, and there's certain decisions that you have to make, but we'll get into that when we hit that portion. Um, tribal and Indian preference, you have to describe in your preference policy, um, given for your tribal members and other Indian families for housing assistance, for employment, for contracting, you know, to Indian organizations or Indian-owned enterprises. Are you gonna undertake any model or over-income activities? You know, if it's a model activity, eh, you're proposing, you know, to utilize that funding, you have to describe the undertaking and what type of household is gonna be served by that. Um, if it's a non-low income person, you know, they're over income and they're gonna be served, describe the number of families between eighty and a hundred percent. Um, that you're serving, if it's over that ten percent that you have to track within your authority. Or you have to talk about those applicants, if you have any, that are over a hundred percent of median income. And they require, remember that, that HUD approval. So the I H P tribal certifications, recipient certifications of compliance, you know, the Title II of the Civil Rights Act, five oh four of the Rehab Act, the Age Discrimination Act, other federal laws applicable to your T D H E, um. If you receive less than two hundred thousand, this is put into place for some of our wealthier tribes, you have to certify that you have families there that at, that are, um, eighty percent or below median income within your communities. You have to, uh, certify that you are maintaining adequate insurance coverages for your housing units, um, that are owned and operated, that you have eligibility, admission and occupancy policies in place, that you have rents and homebuyer payments policies in place, collection policies, things like that, payback agreements, so. You know, that you're certifying when you're getting that money that you have all of this, so please, please make sure that you have it. Make sure that it's up to date. Um, if not, apply for some assistance. You can get it virtually, you can get it in person, but you can get it free of charge. So there's no reason that you don't reach out and ask somebody to come help me, you know, um. That's what we're out here doing. So tribal I H P certification, tribal official signs it. Um, the I H P, they certify, they've had the opportunity to review that and any amendments and authorizes its submittal. Or in some cases, they will allow the T D H E to submit the I H P amendment without prior review by the tribe. Now, I had that, but I was there twenty-eight years. So, you know, they knew that I wasn't gonna be submitting anything, you know, that they didn't agree with. So your administrative and your planning cost, how much can you spend? It's dependent upon how much you receive. So if you get more than five hundred thousand dollars, it's capped at twenty percent. If you receive less than five hundred thousand, the cap is thirty percent. You can utilize the A N P money for preparation of an I H P or an A P R. You lose the person that's preparing it. It's by well worth it to take some money out and pay somebody to go do it, you know? But HUD will help you walk through that yourself also. Um, staff and overhead costs directly related to carrying out your I H P activities. If you wanna challenge your formula and we'll talk about that when we get into that component. Um, overall program cost for the administrative management and other A N P costs as considered at, you, you know, the discretion of you as the recipient. So your annual performance report, um. The I H P, you're telling them what you're gonna do. The A P R, you're telling them what you did, is basically what goes there. So you described the performance for your previous program year. It highlights how you ensured compliance and financial accountability, provides statistics on the unit quality. This is how much I actually built, you know, or this is what I actually did. Uh, and the cost and your program outcomes. It's used by the recipient, by your tribal members, because you have to put it out for public comment and HUD to provide feedback for program performance. What it's also used for is we did not have mechanisms in place for many of those first years where I started for Congress to know, okay, we pumped this much money in the Indian country, what did they do with it? This tells them exactly. This is what they did with the money. So why is it important? It's a statutory requirement, first of all. You have to res- you know, put it out for public comment, so you can't hide what you're doing, you know, in, in anybody else's eyes. Why would you want to? But, uh, it is a tool to track your I H P progress. So, you know, they're looking at this, i- if you say we're gonna give down payment assistance to twenty families and that's been in your I H P for the last five years and you go back and you look at your A P Rs and you've helped two, or you've helped none, or you've helped four, reduce that amount, you can always amend it at any time. Holy moly, you know, they got a good, successful program. We said we're gonna help ten and we're already up to eight. Well, you can amend your I H P, you know, a- at that point. About thirty days to, you know, revise that. That's better than consistently saying that I'm gonna do something and then not doing it. Um, it's used for self-assessment and planning and technical assistance necessary from HUD. They find this a lot during the self-monitoring portion, um, because you're supposed to identify what you did and what you discovered. Well, you might have discovered, you know, I let in five families this year and their files weren't complete, or they weren't income-eligible or whatever. What does that mean? That means I need to call and ask for A N O. Or I went through and we reviewed the procurement files and we don't have all the stuff we're supposed to have in those files. What does that mean? Well, maybe we need to ask for procurement and contract administration for help with that. Um. That will give you, hopefully, internally from within, if you're actually doing the self-monitoring, an idea of, you know, your weak points and it's public information. Okay? So the key sections of that A P R, your actual outcomes and outputs, you know, next to your suggested ones or, or your, what you said you were gonna do, what your program accomplishments were, how much that budget was, your expanded formula area, if you had one. Did you actually service people there? Did you do your self-monitoring? Did you have your boots in every single one of your dwelling units this year? Once a year, you gotta be in there. Whether, it could be the move-in inspection, the move-out inspection, but you gotta be in every one of them once a year. Did you get your audits done on time? You can get in a lot of trouble if you don't. If you hit those thresholds for those audit requirements and you don't do it, they can threaten to take your money and, and I was just working with the tribe under that very, very circumstance. Um, they were like three years behind. HUD doesn't like that. Um, you have to make sure that those audits are done, so as a Board of Commissioner, you need to find out what the audit requirements are and if they're scheduled, because, you know, they don't, don't come on a drop of a hat. You gotta get months and months of, you know, on their schedule usually. Um, put it out for bid, all of that stuff. It takes time. So, um, make sure that you have that in your vision also. Um, public accountability and how many jobs were actually supported by Nahazda. So again, it starts with, you know, the same group of documents, basically your cover page, the name of the recipient, name and the title of the person authorized to submit it, signature of that person and the date that you actually submitted it. Then you report on your programs, you know, what were your accomplishments? What were the reasons for your delays, if you had any, and how much was your actual outputs? You said you were gonna do six and you did two, you know? And then you have reporting on the budget. It actually describes the actual sources and uses of funds. Now, these are huge budgeting components. This is why I was saying you have tribal finance involved, they need to know that they need all of these figures and when they're gonna need them. And you start your A P R months before its due date because it's gotta go out uh, for the approval of your Board of Commissioner, sometimes your tribal council. It's gotta go up for public comment. You gotta have the monitoring involved in there. So, you know, the due date might be June thirtieth, but you need to start working on that in March, the majority of times, or April, um, to make sure you hit that. So, um, your finance people really need to be able to devote the time because I've seen a lot of cases in the last couple of years where they were getting trouble because their I H Ps and their A P Rs weren't done and it was as a result of the finance people, not the housing component part. So, um. If you're a Board of Commissioner, sometimes you gotta step up and tell the tribal council, you know, this isn't working this way, or they need to be trained, or we need to, you know, have somebody else help with this activity, so we're not late. So watch that. Uh, reporting on your other submission items, you know, uh, it's a new section where recipient describes expenditures of funds in an expanded formula area and you don't have to do it unless you successfully, you know, expanded your formula area. And certifications, there's self-certifications of compliance and that you've done your self-monitoring. And then all of the basic same ingredients that, that were in that I H P, that you have all of those policies in place that it's talking about, A, B, C, and D. Okay? Um, if you have people that are not below eighty percent of median income, the majority of your tribe, and that you're following, you know, your Civil Rights Act and things like that. I started out in day one, um. Your tribal housing program is one of the most heavily regulated programs that your whole tribe will offer. Um, there's just so many different components. It's just not housing. We have to adhere and make sure that we, you know, comply with all these different laws. Um, relocation and, you know, the different titles and, and, and it, there's a lot, the environmental reviews. So your A P R guidance, it's due to your area own app office no later than ninety-day, ninety calendar days after the end of your program year. You have to describe your activities, your expenses from your previous twelve-month program year. It's designed to trap all your I H P sections so you can easily report on the progress of your eligible activities. So HUD's timeline, they have sixty days and they actually write a little report on the A P R, okay? To review your A P R, make recommendations in a report to you as a recipient that you, they found out that you, you know, hopefully carried out all your eligible activities in a timely manner and in accordance with the Nahazda, you know, rules and regulations. You've complied with your I H P, you know, you spent the money where you said you were gonna spend it and that they have found that that report, your annual performance report, is accurate. And if not, then you got some answering to do. So that assessment isn't on time. Do within ninety days of the end of your program year. Is it complete? Do they have sufficient data for review? Is it accurate? Can you, you know, prove what you're reporting and progress? Did, you know, is there progress on your I H P program and your performance issues, if you've had any? So the self-monitoring, ouch, is a large part, you know, it's a large component of that. Um, it's the process of recording the operations of a system, observing, reviewing activities over the course of a year, detecting deficiencies, taking steps to correct them and recording and reporting through that A P R, which is your annual compliance assessment for your annual performance report. Okay? You have to monitor grant activities in accordance with your I H P. You need to complete a, a compliance assessment, including a, an inspection of all of your units. You need to develop a corrective action plan to address any areas that you have revealed or you're non-compliant or you need to strengthen. Uh, and you have to include a summary of those results and corrective actions in your A P R. Now, they're gonna ask for a summary. When HUD comes on-site, they will say, can you show me, you know, your results of your self-monitoring that you've undertaken every year since the last time we were here? And you better be able to pull them out of that file. Um, you know, they say only three years, there are certain things and between HUD monitorings, you keep there. The purpose, what's the importance, you know, to ensure that you, you, you're compliant with your rules and your requirements, that the tribe and the T D H E policies, um, those procedures that you're compliant with, not only the Nahazda ones, but the, the tribal portions or, or the things that you've adopted. Um, the procurement policy that comes from the tribe. The travel policy, the, if you're utilizing the tribes, you know, and that it's consistent with the I H P, that you're efficient and you're effective in your spending of those federal funds. That's probably the, the key word, um, that a lot of times gets missed. Those are federal funds. You have to be really, really careful how you spend them. When it comes to you as board members. a, a, a board seat, a, a board stipend is not a job. And, and you can't meet excessively, nor can you charge stipends excessively, there's guidance in there about that. And one of the things they will look at is, is your board getting paid similar to what the rest of the boards for the tribe are receiving? And then they look at every set of meeting minutes. And they're gonna see that you actually conducted business, you had a, a reason to convey, you know? Um, your board meetings are supposed to be up a year in advance. You do that by saying, okay, we're gonna meet the third Thursday of every month. And you put it up in the tribal office or the, the Housing Authority Office or both. So your tribal members know if they have a problem, when they can go to get on that docket. Um, you have to be really careful there, that you're not receiving a lot of money. Um, that you're not calling meetings just to have meetings. You don't get paid by the hour, it should be a set small figure. Mileage is not usually included. Um, there's different things that I've seen, different people get tagged for, you know? Um, y- you gotta be careful there, that it's not excessive, okay? And that you take really good meeting minutes, you conduct yourself really, really well during your meetings, your board chair has a huge job. Especially if you're recording those, because they'll listen to those recordings also. You know, he needs to come to order, you know, that's not on the agenda, you have an approved agenda. Um, you, you can't be going off track. So, um, make sure that your, your board chair is also, um, fully aware of his duties and how to run a meeting there, okay? So self-monitoring, not less frequently than annually, each recipient shall review the activities conducted, housing assisted under the ag- this act, basically, so this is coming from Nahazda, to assess compl- uh, compliance with the requirements of the act. Such review shall include onsite inspection of the housing to determine compliance. Uh, the result of each review shall be included in the performance report of the recipient submitted to the secretary under section four oh four and made available to the public. Now, the public comment, I went to several of our area own app offices and asked, um, they know me and the majority of them, um, show me the length of time that this has to go out for public comment. And it's not in the law, so basically I said, okay, give me the sweet spot, what, what do you guys want? You're the ones that are, you know? And basically, they'd like to have that out for two weeks, if possible. Don't ever try to put it up for less than a full week. Um, it'll probably get sent back to you. But two weeks seems to be the sweet spot, um, out for public comment. So that tells you how much you have to back that thing up still, you know, uh, to be compliant. So you are responsible for monitoring grant activities to ensure compliance with those federal requirements and your monitoring performance goals under your I H P. Your performance measurement, uh, the agency must require recipients to relate financial data, performance accomplishments, demonstrate cost effectiveness. Your data is measured in a way to help improve program outcomes, share lessons learned, spread the adoption of, you know, promising practices. And then you go under two C F R, part two hundred, the administrative guidance. You're responsible for oversight of the operations of a federal award and the support activities. You have to monitor activities to assure compliance with your applicable federal requirements, your performance expectations. Your monitoring has to cover each program, function, and activity. And it would apply to any sub-awards that you have or any sub-receipients if you have those in, you know, in place. Who's gonna do the monitoring, okay? Monitoring partners, the recipient themselves, the tribe, when the recipient is a T D H E, your auditor, objective third parties, and HUD will be doing monitoring, you know? Sometimes not when you want them to be doing it, but they will be there monitoring. Um, I've used professors at our college, grant writers at our college. They're, you know, they're familiar with a lot of those different components that we have to fall under. Ask them to come in and, you know, if, you know, building trades, people that do a lot of building, human resources for the tribe. Um, it depends on what area you're monitoring. Perhaps the finance people for the tribe, if you've got finance done within. So you can utilize a lot of different people, we use, you know, our sister tribe. We did that for a little bit, but tribes aren't really good about sharing information with each other, you know? The housing people trust each other more, um, than sometimes the tribes do. So I, I've seen it tried throughout the United States and sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes it works for like one time only. So you can do that, you know, if you have somebody willing and able to, to do that. Or if you're somebody, you know, Chicasa, Cherokee, Navajo, that have different components all over, because they're so widespread, you can, you know, send one from one office to the other to monitor them. So those are different ways to do that. So some of those related responsibilities to, um, provide periodic progress reports to your tribe. Tribes with the T D H E monitor to ensure the T D H E is in compliance with Nahazda and the implementation of the I H P. Consider comments, um, from the tribe, or if anybody commented from the public after they reviewed your A P R, and conduct that annual audit if it's required. Make sure you conduct it. And why, you know, you're gonna demonstrate accountability for your performance, you're gonna hopefully build that organizational capacity, ensure compliance with the regulations, identify system weaknesses, improve efficiency and effectiveness of practices. So I was actually at, at one of the Publos a couple of months ago, and one of their board members was from a different state, but she came in for three days and she had, you know, she was using something that, you know, I'm kinda sharing i- in the reference materials. And she was going through the different programs and doing that audit all by herself. And then she was gonna report back to the rest of the board members, this is what I found, this is what I think we need to look at more, you know? Um, but the executive director, everybody, you know, they knew she was coming, they knew that they were gonna go in. When you do your monitoring, okay? You don't monitor your A N O department in the middle of the research or in the middle of inspections. You don't monitor your procurement portion in the middle of your building season. So when you look at self-monitoring, it's done throughout the year to prepare for that A P R. And you try to do it in your downtimes, if, you know, if you have them. Here, when there's no snow on the ground and the snow just left in May, and it will be back on Halloween. We don't usually do self-monitoring during this time. This is when we're inspecting all the units, so we can see how the yards are, nothing's covered up. This is when we're doing all our building. Um, this is our busy time, that's, you know, we don't take training this time of year, usually. It's our busy time. We do that in the winter when there's ten feet of snow and, you know, we can't go outside. But that's when you do your self-monitoring also. So, you know, you take that into play depending upon where you're at, I know Alaska's the same way, you know, so. You could be in California and roasting, this is the time of year you guys wanna be inside, so it depends on your climate also. So that self-monitoring overview, you observe and you re- review your activities over the course of the year, detect your deficiencies, take steps to correct them, record and report through, you know, that annual compliance assessment, your A P R, and, um, make sure that you're compliant with your I H P, the law, and the regulations, and then request training, whether it be the board members that request it, the executive director, the staff members, but get that training in there, so you can say, this is how we fixed it, you know? Um, that's what they'll look for. So from own apps perspective, monitor your performance against your goals, check your relevance and the quality of your activities, identify your issues internally before any other partner discovers it, and hopefully solve those problems promptly. Now, when it comes to training and technical assistance, it can take three to four months on a good day to get from the time you ask for something until you have boots on the ground and they're there. Um, so you gotta kind of plan for it. It, you don't wait till the, the last minute, cause it takes a while. So this is like a sample self-monitoring, you know, you're gonna be doing some things in August and September, some October all the way through May. Um, this is your time, you're gonna out, outcome and bring it into compliance, so your, your administration a- and, and occupancy, your environmental review compliance, your uh, financial and fiscal management, the organizational structure as a whole, your I H P, your A P R compliance, your policies and your procedures, um, your planning. Definitely, you know, your procurement portion, your procurement, your contract administration, that's huge, as well as your environmental review compliance, um, those are all big, big things. So in your A P R, you're saying that you've done self-monitoring. Do you have a procedure and a policy for self-monitoring? Pursuant to one thousand five oh two, where the recipient is a T D H E. Did the T D H E provide periodic progress reports, including self-monitoring and the annual performance report to the tribe? Did you conduct self-monitoring, including monitoring sub-receipients, if you had any? And what are the results? Describe the results of your monitoring activities, including corrective actions planned or taken. We're gonna ask for A N O training, we're gonna ask for procurement training, we're gonna ask for a review of all of our policies. You know, that's how you go about trying to fix those. So worth the price of admission, and the admission is free, thanks to the Native Learning Center, these sample monitoring plans are for every department, and it will show you some of the things HUD's gonna come in and look for. If you do nothing at else, you hand the A N O portion to your A N O staff and say, make sure that when they come and check this stuff, you've done it. If, if nothing else, it'll give them a little bit of their job description and what they have to make sure is done. Now, this hasn't been updated for a while, so it might reflect a number that is not exactly the current number, but that's all that there is out there, and it will help you immensely. Um, i- it's just a, a good thing to use. So HUD's responsibility, reviewing your A P R submitted, providing T A as needed, conducting a review, your records, report your audits. They're gonna make onsite visits as appropriate, and providing T A and training when requested by you as the recipient. So the other sections, you know, you capture your remaining required items. Make sure your inspections are done, your audits, your public accountability, how many jobs supported by Nahazda and your I H P waiver request. Now, I've heard, cause I go out all over, places where they say, well, they're in a homeownership program, we don't audit that, or we don't inspect that house. You need to, um. If it's a twenty-year program and they relinquish the house or you evict them in the eighteenth year, you have to bring that house all the way back up to new, to give it to a new participant. So it behooves you to make sure that is inspected and taken care of. You make them, you know, this needs to be corrected, we'll be back in a month, or we can correct it and bill you. But you still need to make sure whatever is wrong is corrected, because you're ultimately responsible until the day that that turns over. Um, that's why you go into even homeownership programs. So your organizational management a- and that control system, it's a planned organizational framework to achieve program objectives. You know, you're gonna, they're gonna ask for an org chart, make sure you have an org chart. You need job descriptions, okay? Jobs descriptions is a area that we get into trouble with in Indian country. At least we did here, um, and I've seen it. You hire somebody for a job in their tribal, depending on the size of the family that they come from, and you're not supposed to say things like this, but this is what happens. And they can't do their job. And what happens? The tribal council says, give them a job they can do. So what you hired them for and the job description that they have is not at all what they do. You're gonna have to make sure that somebody rewrites that job description to what they actually do and what you want them to complete. Um, you have no basis to do evaluations on, and you can get in trouble down the line, because their job description is not what they actually do. Um, so in this area, that's something you kinda, as a board member, as a tribal council member, um, you gotta make sure that it's actually what they're doing. Um, policies and procedures, if you say you have to have them, you have to have them. Make sure that you do, make sure that they're up to date, make sure that they're reviewed. Management controls and internal controls, make sure that they're in place, so that self-monitoring tests the management and your control system. Some of that control environment is done by self-monitoring, by management, by having proper internal controls, policies and procedures, making sure that you have an independent public accountant, you know, and audit, um, when needed. Um, HUD's gonna review it to, to make sure, and then the governing body is ultimately responsible to make sure that you have everything in place that you need. It's, you know, integrity, ethical values, professional standards, organizational structures, reporting relationships which govern the functions of their organization, and they are the ma- major characteristics of your organization and effective management and control systems. Your, your leaders, your managers, you know, they provide structure and discipline within your organization, they set the tone, hopefully, for your organizational control standards, determine the awareness of your staff to those standards, provide clear guidance for how work is done, institutes control to protect resources, to ensure guidance is implemented, and records the activities and decisions, uh, and it's documented in a retrievable manner. There is nothing worse than, I know we have it in those files, I just can't find it. Um, you need a good filing and retrievable system also. It, it does you no good to retrieve it two weeks after HUD leaves or the auditor. So your control activities, ensure your staff know their duties and they perform them consistently. Establish your written policies, their values, your desired outcomes, establish written procedures, describe the task, how they're done. It should include timeframes, filing requirements, management controls, and your internal controls. Um, your auditor will give you a lot of direction, especially when it comes to cash flow and things like that. I mean, they had us build this round circular desk with gates on it, like kitty gates almost, and then put dingers on cash drawers and, um, they will give you ideas about how you can, um, make yourself more efficient. We ended up putting outside cameras out there with a drop box that looked like it came out of a bank, so people could make payments twenty-four hours a day. There was envelopes out there, that's one of another reason for the cameras, so the kids didn't play with the envelopes and the pencils hanging, you know? Um, but, so they could put, and only once do I remember getting an envelope of money and no idea who it belonged to, but then we just watched the video, video footage, you know, so, um, you can do that. So one of the other recommendations at one time, we were rebuilding part of the office, we put all the files in closet areas with locking, with combination locks on them, and only a few people had the access to those combinations. And there was a file, you know, in and out tenant file, so you knew where the tenant file was all the time. You weren't supposed to leave for the day with files on your desk either, just in case you didn't come back. Um, certain things like that, they'll, they'll strengthen during times like that. So you identify potential risk, analyze the degree of the severity, um, factors include lack of staff experience, size and or expense of a project or an activity, complexity, uh, potential of inadequate income to support the longevity of a project. I remember my tribal chairman under different COPs programs and things like that. Sure, they're gonna fund that COP Cheryl for two years, but who's gonna fund them for the rest of their, you know, he would, he would say that to me and it. I had to think about the, the long term, you know, writing for this grant or doing that, you have to assure that, you know, you have enough in the long run. Um, potential of an inadequate income to support, you know, um, the longevity of a project, especially when you're sent to, you know, setting those rent structures and things like that. As a risk management strategy, consider performing self-monitoring before and during the activity assessed as high risk. As a risk management strategy, consider performing self monitoring before and during the activity assessed as high risk. Um, you'll run into that in your procurement. I had people and contractors that could build me five houses all day long, when I needed eighty. There's no way, they didn't have the labor force, they didn't have the money, they didn't have the tools to perform at that. You know, large of a scale, there's certain things, it depends on what you're asking for. Um, a- and you have to be able to, you know, project that. Your lack of staff experience is huge too, um, when it comes to especially again, you know. Procurement, um, bid openings, things like that. Just because you opened all the hu- the mail for the housing authority, you can't open a bid document, a- and. You can assume that somebody knows something, but make sure that the person that's breaking them for lunch knows that also. Things slip, and you you find out how they slip over time, or or areas where that could happen, so. Um, this last module is on the formula. Um, this is how you get your money, and this is how they come about that data for your your formula. So it's used to allocate the grant funding for the tribes, T D H Es. You need to review this stuff, it should have came out June first. It's online. Go through Code Talk and look at your figures for the year. And take the time to look at the figures for your tribe, a- and are they, are they up to date? Are are they real? Do you think you should be challenging it? You can challenge that with that A M P money. Statutory regulatory requirements, uh, they're found in Title III of the Nahazda statute. They are also found under the regs of one thousand from three oh one to three forty, those areas talk about. The formula. So it's how we allocate our block grant funds, it's developed as part of negotiated rulemaking, so they cannot do anything. To our formula without conveying negotiated rulemaking, okay, they can't change our rules. They can't touch the formula. That we were given that, we we fought for that during, um, and it's in the Nahazda statute. Uh, the intent is to make an equitable distribution of the annual appropriation. And the allocation is the basis of your annual budget. The fo- formula response form is published. Around June first, depending on how it falls in the year. It includes the data to be used for the formula, the estimated allocation amount for the upcoming year. Corrections are due within sixty days after the date of that formula response form. If you are going to challenge that data, that census challenge deadline is March thirtieth of the prior fiscal year. So I would have to start working on next year's challenge and have it in by March thirtieth of next year. To affect the one that comes out next June. Corrections have to be submitted to the Formula Customer Service Center. It is first pick who does that, and I've got the information here within the slides. And the final allocations are completed after the budget is appropriated. So they can vary from the estimate based on a lot of different reasons, you know, um. Different final allocation amounts from what was in that estimate, the tribe's data changed. Other tribes' data changed, somebody had to pay back money, uh, somebody didn't accept their money that year. More tribes came in, you know, um, there's a lot of different things that can affect that, and parts of the formula components. So it is distributed to a formula, calculated annually, depending on the appropriation from Congress. That first run produces the estimated allocation available online around June first, it's there right now. The data of the final formula run varies by when the president signs the budget or the appropriations in the law. And our formula contains four key components. Our current assisted stock, okay, so everything built prior to Nahazda nineteen ninety six, basically. Your need portion, the nineteen ninety six minimum. And the newest one, which is the undispersed I H B G funds factor. So your F cast is developed under the nineteen thirty seven Housing Act before Nahazda. Called current assisted stock, there was low rent mutual help turnkey houses and section eight. There was nineteen thirty seven units in the development pipeline after Nahazda. And section eight that expired but is still managed like the section eight program. Two elements of your F cast, your operating subsidy and your modernization allocation. It is adjusted by the fiscal year nineteen ninety six average. For operating subsidy and modernization allocation. There's local cost and inflation adjustments. You need to report changes to information related to the formula on your formula current. Formula response form, including corrections to the number of F casts. That money, those those units built before Nahazda that you received the subsidy on. Make sure that you're, you know, if you've got one and it's, you're getting a rental subsidy, that you're actually collecting rent and taking care of those. Now. I've seen areas where people have been in those houses twenty and twenty five years, and tribal councils will come in and they'll say. They've been in that house for twenty five years, if they were in a homeownership program that way, they would own it. Why don't we just give them the house? And I've seen them do that. Um, I would urge you, if you have F casts related to a house. Build them another house and keep that F cast going on that particular unit. Because once you give it away and you convey that house, it's gone, and it, this is something that's not available to anybody else. It's only basically on your rental units and a few mutual help units out there and some section eight. Um, and that's the only way that you can get that ongoing subsidy, so it's really important that you protect that. So your formula response form is the only mechanism that you can use to report changes to the number of your F casts. Mutual help turnkey, they're not supposed to consider those formula current assisted stock. Um, when you no longer have the legal right to operate, maintain that unit, okay? Conveyance of the mutual help and turnkey is supposed to occur as soon as possible, when that. Becomes um eligible for conveyance under the terms of the mutual help and occupancy agreement. Your tribe, T D H E, I H A, they have to actively enforce strict compliance by the home buyer. With the terms and conditions of that occupancy agreement included. Um, including the requirements for full and timely payment. So they say that a a unit not conveyed after it becomes available for conveyance by the terms of the M H O A. Can continue to be considered formula because current assisted stock, only if it's a legal impediment. That continues to exist, and it gives you a timeframe to correct that, no later than four months, you know. You can read that at your own leisure, but you really shouldn't have that. Any mutual help units out there, there are very few tribes that are still receiving money for their mutual help units. They were supposed to be conveyed, the majority of them by two thousand and sixteen, so that's almost ten years ago, nine years ago anyway. Rental units shall continue to be included for formula purposes as long as they continue to be operated as a low income rental unit. Okay? You can't turn it into a laundromat, it has to be a sleeping quarter, things like that, so you gotta be careful there. Um, expired contract section eight units shall continue as rental units. And will be included on the formula as long as they are operated as a low income rental unit and included. On that tribe's formula response form. So demolished units, now this is gonna. Even a rental. If you have a fire, for instance, or if you choose to demolish one. You have one year to rebuild that. You can ask for an extension, and they will grant it to you if you have good reasoning. I had an apartment building that caught fire. We had to ask for an extension. Um, why? Because it happened in the middle of the winter, and the first priority was to rehouse everybody. That's what we concentrated on first, and then you had to put it out for bid. You know, start all of that, start the building process, and we couldn't get it completely done. And um, the date of full availability be the one year mark, so we had to ask for an extension. And you know, because of our short building season, they will grant that to you, you just have to keep them in the loop. Let them know that what was going on and that you were trying. Requests have to be submitted in writing to the formula center and include a justification of the request. We went right to HUD first, told them what was going on, and then got a hold of the formula center. Um, but just anything that you received that subsidy on, you have one year, something happens, whether you're demolishing it, it's a fire. You know. A flood, whatever the purpose, um, you got a one year rebuilding window, and that's basically it. So certain units aren't eligible as F casts, any units that you built over the number specified in the original A C C. With the date of full availability after nineteen ninety seven. They give me, we would compete. Under the old program, I would, you know, I would like ten rental units this year. Or I'd compete for twenty, or twenty, twenty mutual help units. Never know what you were gonna get awarded, usually you'd get almost everything you asked for, I was very successful in doing that. And sometimes, when I was building, I'd get awarded ten and have enough to build eleven, while under that. Scenario, I wouldn't be receiving the subsidy on that unit, should it have been that year, okay? Units not used as low income housing dwelling dwelling units, which would include. Any unit that's conveyance eligible, conveyed, or that you have demolished. Units constructed with Nahazda funds, there's no subsidy attached to those. Units that are you are using for the V A S program, there is a subsidy attached to those, it's a V A S subsidy and you can't have two. Uh, vacant units unless it's being made available for occupancy. Or units being um, used for non dwelling purposes. So review your formula response form, report any corrections to your unit counts, unit types. Actual and expected date of full availability for occupancy. Those submitted corrections are gonna be reviewed, huddle and form the tribe of the corrected unit count. So if you misrepresent or fail to correct your formula current assisted stock, this will walk you through what happens. Um, they have three years from the date a form is sent out to take action against a recipient that fails to correct or make appropriate changes. And sometimes, that's where you'll see the money differ it, a- and you have to pay that money back. Or you get that much less in your yearly allocation, and that will also. Effect the formula and everyone else. So the second component is need, after determining your F cast allocation, remaining funds are allocated by the need component. The need component consists of seven criteria, based on the Decentennial Census and the American Community Survey, the A C S five year data. And it's adjusted for your local development cost. So they're gonna look at how many people that you have at poverty level, very low income, thirty to fifty percent. How many at low income, how many Alaskan, our American Indian Alaska natives that you have? How many that are rent burden, which includes more than rent? Uh, how many are in overcrowded households, and how much do you have of a housing shortage? This is when I said your grant writers. Sometimes could, you know, assist you with this. And then you have your formula area, it's a geographic area providing substantial housing services. Your formula area, your Indian area are different. And there's such a thing called an overlapping formula area. I have one. Now, I can understand all day long, me overlapping with my sister tribe that's twenty miles away. But they had me overlapping with a tribe that's four hours away. And I'm like, you show me your tribal people that you're taking care of here. You know, um, even if they're in our college, we're the one taking care of them. So. I I think we won that fight, um, so you can challenge your overlapping areas sometimes too. The Indian tribes proportional share of the proportion of your overlapping geographic area. Your commitment to serve your proportional share of that population in such area. You're gonna have to, you know, i- it's divided up and you might have to challenge it. In cases where it is a state recognized tribe and it overlaps with the federally recognized Indian tribe. Your federally recognized Indian tribe will receive the allocation for that overlapping area. If you have tribal membership in your geographic area, not including duly enrolled members. It will based on the data that both tribes or all the tribes agree to use, okay? They use B I A, they use uh tribal enrollment list, U S Census, Indian Health Services user data. Bureau of Indian Affairs data. Um, and if you guys can't agree what you're gonna use, HUD will decide for you, okay? And um, they'll make the decision on what data will be used to divide the funds by August first. Remember, you have to have that in by March thirtieth. So there is a population cap, a a control to maintain fairness, only if your American. Indian Alaska native persons are more than two times your enrollment, and there's a challenge process available. The third component is the nineteen ninety six hold harmless. Your tribe's funding is never reduced below what you received in nineteen ninety six, so it's a good idea to find out what that threshold is. By law, is not allowed to drop below that amount. That's the amount that you received in nineteen ninety six for operating and modernization subsidy. Your funding is adjusted to the amount that you received in nineteen ninety six, and it is a statutory, um, requirement. And then you have the undispersed block grant funds factor. This only applies to tribes who get more than five million in a year, okay? It's gonna apply to the amount of funds that they have left in E L O Cs. It does not apply to tribes that have approved investments. So if they have an undispersed amount, let's say they got. Eight million dollars last year, they get seven million this year. They got six million three years ago. If they have over that twenty one million dollars in their E L O Cs. Then the amount in excess of that prior three years allocation. Or their nineteen ninety six minimum will be redistributed to all of the tribes, okay? It's so they don't have too big of a, what they call a pipeline, um, there was big fights over that. When I was chairperson, um, during that timeframe. So that is a new formula factor, it provides adjustments for tribes with initial allocation of five million or more. Who have more than three years allocation um, in the pipeline. And it's not an investment tribe, that initial allocation is gonna be reduced, any amounts recovered will be redistributed across the board. So this is who you call and ask all your questions. This is who you call if you wanna challenge something, or if you, you know, need something explained. And this is also where you can go and um, click to see what your formula is this year, okay? This last part, and I know I'm running a little bit late again, um, is the board's role, your responsibility, so it's it's pretty quick. Each member of your board of directors has to fulfill their fiduciary duties of the housing organization to the tribal members that you serve. Your legal primary duties include care, loyalty, and obedience. The duty of care requires that all the board members be familiar with your organization's activities, your programs, your finances. That you participate regularly in governance, attending all your board meetings, participating in the discussions and the decision making. The duty of loyalty require that a board member must never use information that they have gained through your position. For personal gain, including tenant related information. You always need to act in the best interest of the housing organization in which you represent. The duty of obligation requires that you as a board member ensure that the organization complies. With all the applicable laws and regulations, including ensuring that the organization carries out its purpose. And does not engage in any type of unauthorized activity. You need to provide proper management and oversight of those T D H E operations. The board is responsible for securing the management of that housing organization. Um, making sure the operations are undertaken in accordance with the laws and program requirements and the board priorities and policies. Several partners, tribe, HUD, board, and your housing entity itself. All have one mission, your tribal community's mission, you know, that's what HUD thinks as the funding agency. That's what the tribe in their governance, leadership, you as the board of commissioners, and then the administration of the housing entity itself. leadership, you as the board of commissioners, and then the administration of the housing entity itself. So who makes the decisions? Oftentimes, the better question is whose responsibility is it to make that decision? A commissioner provides leadership, sets policy, approves budgets and hopefully will help earn community support. Your executive director is the management, is the manager of your day-to-day activities, of the housing staff and all of the programs. And the board and the, and the ED, you know, hopefully you're gonna work together and be an effective team. It's impossible to administer a, a successful and efficient housing program, much less make decisions without an effective executive director. It's even harder when you don't have a positive working relationship with a qualified and engaged board of commissioners. So who does what? The responsibility is financial management. It's the board of commissioners who create the policies for effective financial management. They ensure good internal controls. Your ED is supposed to ensure policy adherence with the staff. The budgeting, BOC is gonna approve the budgets. The ED is going to invest funds, ensure the bills are paid, handle the day-to-day operations and the expenditures of those federal funds. Bids, contracting. You're going to go and help with the approval of the bids for major purchases. The ED will make the recommendations, carry out the actual purchase in accordance with your established procurement and policies and procedures. Your departmental budgets, approved budgets and general funding for staff and salary benefits are under the board of commissioners. Your ED will decide the scope of each department's activities and recommend those annual raises. Personnel policies, you know, you as the BOC are gonna set the broad personnel policies. The ED will determine the level of the staff, write the job descriptions, hire, do the promoting, the evaluations and dismiss the staff. Complaints of the staff. You could be approached to hear staff complaints, but you always need to refer those back to the director to follow your internal grievance procedure. Your ED is supposed to resolve the staffing issues as per established personnel policy and grievance procedure. Now, when it comes to any complaint, your, eat your housing department, your housing entity needs to have a form and you do not accept any type of complaint unless it's in writing. If it's not in writing, it didn't happen. That's just, you know, the way that it's looked at. Your complaints from your housing recipients, you could be approached to hear housing complaints. You're always gonna have to refer them back again to the director to follow your housing protocols and grievances. Only accept complaints in writing, identifying the parties and send it on to the ED. Your ED will resolve the housing complaints as per established housing grievance procedures and they may refer it back to you as a board if appropriate. The rules, you know, HUD's responsibilities is to interpret the statutes, the regulations and provide the guidance to make sure our program implementation, to distribute our funding, our housing uh via the formula, manage and evaluate our program performance, ensure timely reporting from the tribe and the THG and all of the entities. If they receive complaints from the public, they'll investigate that uh regarding the housing entity and your funding resources. Sometimes they'll recommend and inform tribes of resources available to the tribe and tribal entities. They always did that, you know, through the eastern woodlands. Then you have your board meetings, your board operations, the business of the housing board. The founding documents, your authority to act, you need to find your tribal ordinance and read it. It establishes the power of the housing entity over housing matters on behalf of the tribe, names the powers of the authority, the officers on your board, authorizes existence of your housing entity in relationship with the tribe, tribal resolutions, adopting the founding documents, and then the bylaws. The bylaws are huge. You definitely need as a board member a copy of those. It outlines your basic rules, provides the legal name of the organization, the purpose, the number and the members of the board, the meeting details, the agenda. It often will tell the address. It'll tell you how you seat those different people, how long their terms are, meeting details, agenda items. It'll give you usually a proposed agenda that you should be following, your committees if you have them. It'll tell you what parliamentary authority you should be utilizing. Are you under Robert's rules? Does your chairman make or break a tie or do they vote? You need to know all of that. And I don't deal with amendments. Do you know what's in your housing authority bylaws? Make sure you get a copy, become familiar. It'll cover housing entity name, location, hours of operation, housing entity and meeting, types, time and location, officer positions, duties, elections, provisions for amending your bylaws. A best practice is to onboard them, prepare binders with all the board information, founding documents, updated policies for all the new board members. Your chairperson's duties. Depending on your bylaws, it can be appointed by the tribal council. Sometimes the chair is elected by a board action. You have to be familiar with the bylaws, the rules and procedures for effective meetings. Their job is to preside at the meeting, establish the quorum, open timely meetings, recognize the speakers, maintain order, enforce rules, keep the meeting on track, adjourn the meeting and they are the signer of your official documents. Your vice chair, basically all of that. They act in the absence of the chair. They need to be familiar with it all. They need to be able to assume the chair's responsibilities and other responsibilities as stated if they are in your bylaws. Your officers and your duties, your secretary, usually adopted by board action, familiar with record-keeping, bylaws, rules, procedures for effective meetings, some duties as assigned to staff. You're going to need to weed out whether the finance is gonna be done by the treasurer or by a staff member, perhaps the um, accounting person from the housing office. The same thing as recording the meeting minutes. Are you gonna have your secretary, your board secretary do that? Or are you gonna have a staff member from your housing entity? They need to be familiar with record-keeping, bylaws, rules, procedures for effective meeting, duties assigned to staff, record the minutes. They present them for approval, custodian of the records, prepares notices for meetings, prepares the agenda, signs documents. It goes back to what your bylaws say though. The treasurer, usually elected by board action, familiar with financial management, bylaws, rules and procedures for effective meetings. Some duties will be assigned to the housing staff. Who's gonna present the financial reports, responsible for the financial assets of the housing entity and could be a co-signer on the checks. Now, we require two signatures on all of our checks. Any of our tribal council and me were the allowed signers. Now, depending on how you are, you could be under your tribal council, you could have the board members, but you always have at least two. And you should probably always let the executive director be one of the signers. Types of meetings, regular meetings, monthly meetings provide at least forty-eight hours notice. Special meetings held at times between regular meetings provide twenty-four hour notice. An emergency meeting provide notice as soon as possible. Check your bylaws for those posted timelines. Executive session. And I realize that I'm eight minutes late a- and forgive me. Um, executive session are used wrong a lot. You need to become familiar with at least Robert's Rules of Order, Google it and Google executive sessions. Executive sessions, meetings are portions of meetings that are held in private. You need a majority vote to enter executive session. Only board invitees and critical staff attend. Okay? It's usually used for hiring, dismissing disciplinary actions and some property management. You shouldn't be going into executive session for anything else. We're supposed to be having open and fair meetings. Okay? You decide what you're gonna do in executive session, you come out and you take your motions, your first, your seconds, and you make sure it's read into the record. Um, the records and the discussions that you had in there are confidential. Then you resume that open meeting, conduct the voting on those issues that you addressed under, like I said, that executive session. Only the decisions are recorded in the minutes. Very limited subjects are allowed under executive session. This is a misuse. If you guys are using it a different way, you can get in trouble for that. Your agenda is usually pre-scheduled order of business. It's outlined usually from your housing bylaws, prepared by the director or the staff in consultation with your board chair. Must list the items up for consideration. You include the rationale and discussion papers as handouts. As a board member, you need to make sure that your housing staff is giving you the stuff at least a week in advance, you know, more if you can. You shouldn't have to read the meeting minutes from the prior meeting at the table. Um, that should be all done. All the packets for the materials, anything you need to vote on, you should have in advance. Order a business, the usual order of business, call the order, roll call, you approve the proposed agenda, approval of the past meeting minutes, any reports, act on old business, start the new business, any announcements and then you adjourn it. Some boards open with the prayer immediately before or after you call that to order. I never thought until about six months ago, when I came into a housing entity, there was some that didn't like doing that. So you're gonna have to kind of feel that out. Um, it, it was a difference in part of the board being traditional and part being um religious, very, you know, uh, uh, different. So um, you have to kind of weigh that out. Your board resolution is a legal expression of the will of your board of commissioners. It's the official record of decisions made by the board. As far as your auditor and HUD are concerned, unless you're authorized to do something in the meeting minutes, it doesn't matter. It's got to be in the meeting minutes. Whenever you say, oh no, we do it this way, show me in the meeting minutes where you were directed to do that. Okay? Make sure you, make sure you have good meeting minutes. Attachments to resolutions could include proposals, policies, budgets or other rationale for the action prepared by the director or staff. They are kept as official minutes of all board activity chronologically arranged usually by date and year, approved by the board at the next meeting. Do not sit on a bunch of meeting minutes, have three and four months back there. You make sure they're prepared, you make sure they're approved. And if it calls for a seal in your bylaws, buy a seal and affix the seal. Contents of those meeting minutes, they should reflect what actions took place and not the dialogue of your attendees. Separate all your items listed on the agenda. Record roll call at each vote, include the names of voters on each side of the issue, approved by the board at the next meeting, signature and secretary of board, signatures of the secretary and board chairman. We also, when somebody came in or somebody left the meeting, what time it was. Okay? Um, there's one other one that you need to do. Oh, if somebody ever has to abstain from something, let the record show. Cheryl Cosley abstained and left the room. Okay, abstaining mean, does not mean pushing back from the table and not saying anything. It means leaving. And then they, they're not allowed that portion of the meeting minutes either. You do that for contracting because I'm related to somebody, because you're discussing my daughter-in-law, because we're talking about evicting my niece, you know, whatever reason that be. Your meeting minutes are one of the most important documents that you have. You should have copies in binders available throughout time because you need to be able to show everything in them. Then you take digitally scan or lock them up under lock and key or originals. Okay? Because they somehow walk sometimes under certain circumstances and it can really, really disrupt your agency. Okay, but those meeting minutes are very important. Your meeting management, preparation of documents, require, request that the documents such as minutes and monthly reports be provided to the members one week in advance. Board package should be prepared in order of the agenda. And you have to remember you're acting as a role model. Appointment to your board of commissioners, you know, you're, it's an honor, it's a responsibility. Your tribal council, your board of commissioners are expected to serve as role models for your community and the tribal members in which you serve. Strive to make sure that all your governing decision, you know, you're in full compliance, good standing. You know, make sure you're in compliance with your lease if you should be, you know, receiving any type of services, all regulations of the housing entity, you know, should you be a tenant. Vitally important regarding any tenant account receivables. You're gonna serve as that grievance committee as I said yesterday. And it would put your whole board in a very bad light, should be a grievance with anything regarding past housing balances due. So your expected conduct when it comes to behavior or conduct during a board meeting, your conflict of interest requirements such as recusal, again, it puts your housing staff in a very difficult position. They shouldn't have to explain that to you. When I teach tribal councils, I ask them to do that. Meet with your board of commissioners and teach them about recusal. Um, it's hard for that ED or that staff member to say, you know, you really shouldn't be here for this. Or we're talking about your daughter-in-law, you can't come in here and defend her as a board member. You need to step back. Um, you shouldn't even have access to those records. Your son-in-law is a painter for a firm. Um, probably gonna bid on that, you know, you need to know about those lines that you cannot cross. Those are areas a lot, you know, where housing boards should be provided guidance by tribal council and should seek training in conflict of interest, you know, and recusal. So your role with the staff. The staff is responsible to the ED and it is your executive director's responsibility to allocate staff, time and efforts. Commissioners do not have any type of supervisory responsibility. They should never attempt to direct or decide the priority of work for the department or individual staff. The executive director shall manage the time in a manner consistent with what the board has decided in a legally, you know, meeting. Everybody has to have part in that. A couple of board members can't make decisions. It has to be in a duly-called meeting, you know, reflected in those meeting minutes. Final decisions concerning personnel actions are gonna reside with your executive director. Appeals are afforded through the chain of command up to the executive director. And additionally, your priorities established by your ED regarding the delivery of services are also dictated by the availability of funds and needs. I apologize, I went fifteen minutes late. Um, thank you for sticking with me and coming back. I hope you guys come back tomorrow. And Brooke's got something for you guys again.
Thank you so much Cheryl. Um, we do have a webinar feedback survey for y'all to complete. It is a different one for each day of the five-day series. Um, like I said before, it takes about three minutes to complete. Um, they are anonymous, so no worries about like your name or your email being attached to it. But it really helps us at the Native Learning Center know what's working well, what we can improve upon. And then we do also share the feedback with our instructors, so it helps everybody involve. Um, and there's even a spot on there for you to suggest uh future webinar topics that we can try to um book for you. Uh, we hope you can come back for day four of the five-day series. That'll be tomorrow, July tenth. Same time, same place. So two PM Eastern, one PM Central, twelve PM Mountain, eleven AM Pacific, ten AM Alaska. Um, and you can check out this as well as our other recorded webinars on our YouTube channel. They're in the Cathedral Webinar Archive playlist. Uh, that link is for you in the shared notes. And then you can also check out the recordings um in the courses section. And that's where all the uh resource items that Cheryl put together for you are available for download as well. I think there's um twenty-eight of them this time. I might be wrong on the number, but there's two full pages um of the course that you can go through and click all the links. They're all labeled. And we hope you can check out our other upcoming training events. We post about them to our various social media. We're on Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Twitter. We have our in-house produced podcast, The Hope of Thing and Native American Podcast. You can listen to that wherever you listen to your podcasts. Uh, and that is all we have for you folks today. But thank you so much for tuning in. Thank you so much for being a part of the five-day series. This is all such important information. And we hope to see you back again for day four. Uh, that webinar feedback survey link is in the chat for you. I'm gonna go ahead and keep the class open so that you have access to the links in the chat as well as the one in the shared notes. Um, but other than that, we hope you have a great rest of the day and we look forward to connecting with you again really soon. Thank you so much Cheryl. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, bye-bye guys. Thank you. Come back tomorrow.